I'd like to call the September 17th, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission Meeting to order. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the time since our previous county commission meeting, our nation has observed the anniversary of the September 11th attacks on our country. Before we undertake the public business that we have on our agenda this evening, let us have a moment of silence to remember the almost 3,000 people who died that day in New York, at the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania. Those who lost their lives that day included 2,135 civilians, 343 firefighters, 71 law enforcement personnel, 55 military personnel, and 371 non-US citizens who were working at the World Trade Center and the Pentagon when the attacks occurred. Please join us in a moment of silence. All right, we've got a couple of announcements to make. First, I'd like to ask anyone who's got your cellphone with you to please turn it off or silence it. If you parked in the county parking deck to attend this meeting or used the Asheville Transit System to travel to the meeting, you can get validation for your transit pass or parking pass from one of the officers who's with us this evening. Please feel free to see them on your way out. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting." All right. We have one addition that we would like to make to the agenda for this meeting, which is to add a discussion of the Waste Pro contract. And we'll add that under Old Business. And under our policies, we only add new items to the agenda, to commission meetings on items that weren't published on the agenda if it's by consensus. So would someone like to make a motion to add this to the agenda?
I'd like to make it.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The second announcement I'd like to make, we had some discussion at our last county commission meeting about our public procedures. And based on that discussion and feedback we've gotten from members of the public, we have, I don't think there's a, we decided not to have a follow-up discussion about this. I think we've decided to basically just keep the procedures as they are. But one of the things that was helpful in that discussion is that, I think, at least for myself, as we went back and reviewed our procedures, we realized there were a few things about our procedures that we weren't really following exactly as written. So I think what we want to do is just keep the procedures as we have them, but to follow them as they've been adopted. So just a couple of things that I want to say about that. One thing is that we will take, not public comment before we approve the consent agenda, but we will, at our meetings, ask if there are any questions from commissioners as well as members of the public about any items on the consent agenda. So if you're looking at the consent agenda and there's something you have a question about, there'll be an opportunity to ask that question. And that doesn't mean a, you know, full kind of three minutes of public comment, but any questions that people have, you'll be given a chance to raise those questions. There will always be a public comment on any public hearings that we hold, and there will always be the public comment period, which we're going to keep at the end of the meeting. And then if under Old Business, there are three members of the commission who want to add additional public comment on items, we can do that. Or under New Business, it's two items, or two commissioners. So I do think, since we have specifically added the Waste Pro contract this evening, just because this is a new policy that's rolling out, if any members of the public have any comments about that issue when we get to that, we'll invite that at that time. All right. Any questions from any commissioners about any of those procedural items? All right. Very good. So we come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any members of the board about any items on the consent agenda? Are there any questions from any members of the public about the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And please come to the, please come to the mic there to ask a question.
I'm glad enough you don't have to have the mic. I've just got a real simple question. It's probably a one-question answer. The safety plan for mountain mobility, is that a safety plan for the vehicles or something that they're going to be doing? Just a clarification of what that really is.
Okay, thank you for the question.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right. Is there anyone who could provide a short response to that question?
Nate, can I have you to?
Matt.
Oh, Matt, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there, Matt.
So the mountain mobility system safety plan encompasses all aspects of operations, vehicle, safety procedures, operating procedures, facility procedures. It's basically all-encompassing safety plan for the operation of the system.
Is that annual?
So the plan is adopted, and we do annual updates to the plan for any necessary federal and state regulations or for consistency purposes. We're constantly monitoring and reviewing our plan.
Thanks, Matt. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of a discussion of the Waste Pro contract under Old Business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The first, we don't have any presentations, but our first public hearing is our FY 2021 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Applications. And Matt Cable will be back to talk to us about this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide information on our proposed FY 2021 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grant Application. The required public hearing and resolution are part of our annual grant application process. We are requesting funding, grant funding through the North Carolina Department of Transportation Public Transit Division. These are for state and federal grant funds. The grant funds we seek and apply for support a portion of our annual administrative and operating contract costs and capital costs for Buncombe County's community transportation system. In your packet, you'll see information about the specific application documents. There is a memorandum in addition to your request for board action, which outlines specific details about the amount of state and federal funds requested, as well as the local match required. The local match comes from a general fund transfer, which goes into our transportation budget, which supports mountain mobility and our operations of the community transportation system. The request tonight for the board is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution which would authorize the chairman to enter into and execute an application for the funds, enter into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and provide the necessary certifications and grant documents to submit that application and receive those awards. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or at the conclusion of the public hearing, should you have them.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Oh, and we need to have a public hearing on this, sorry. Is there any members of the, let's open the public hearing at 5:13. Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
It may be available. I may not know where to find it, but I have asked for in the past, and continues will ask, the number of people that ride each of the routes that Boost has in Buncombe County. I think that's important information because we really, truthfully, need to be serving the county, and I see it in Weaverville a lot with maybe one or two people on it. So I'd like to know the number of each of the routes. And that's not something to have tomorrow. I support the grant, but I would like to have the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to ask that question.
No problem. Anybody else? All right. And Matt, if you don't have Don's email, y'all huddle and get it, because I know we have those numbers. I saw them recently. The ridership on mountain mobility's gone up a lot over the last year or so. So we'd be happy to get those numbers for you. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Close the public hearing at 5:14. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to make a motion for the third time.
To approve? Thank you. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Pender, do you have any items to share with us under the manager's report?
Yes, sir. I do want to recognize tonight we have in the audience with us our new internal auditor. She started yesterday. So Tricia Barnett, would you stand? So Tricia was actually born here in Asheville, but she moved to Oregon, Eugene, Oregon. For the last four years, she worked there for the UNC. I'm sorry, not UNC. She went to school at UNC. But she worked for the University of Oregon as the chief auditor. She's now back in Asheville. She has her undergraduate degree from UNC Asheville and her master's from Western Carolina. So she's back home, and she'll be an internal auditor. And this is her second day of employment. So thank you.
All right. Welcome. Welcome. We appreciate your coming back to Buncombe County and your work on the team here with the county. Welcome. Anything else, Ms. Pender?
No, sir.
Okay, great. All right. Yes, sir.
Can we go back to good news I had, something I would like to share?
Yes, sir. Please do.
Yeah. It seems like Tuesday, meetings are pretty special here for meetings.
19 months ago, I had a little granddaughter on night of the county commissioner meeting, and had another one today, my fifth granddaughter. So I'd like to welcome in Jessie Jewel Presley. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Put you on Instagram.
Beautiful.
All right. We come to Old Business, and we're going to have some discussion about the Waste Pro contracts. And we've got some folks from Waste Pro who are with us, as well as some of our staff who are working closely with them. So I'm going to invite them to come up and share a few comments with us, and I think we're going to have some discussion following that.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. This is certainly a very, very important topic that impacts all of us. And talking specifically about the solid waste residential collections in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County, that is the specific contract that we're talking about this evening. And I'm going to thank you for bringing up the PowerPoint. So we want to, as Chairman mentioned, provide an update on where we are in the process with the new contract implementation, and also provide some context on what got us to where we are today. So that's where we'll start, is last year, we began the process of, so in anticipation of Waste Pro's current contract expiring this year, December 31st of 2019, we started the process of developing a request for proposals. And with the understanding of, there were certain areas that we knew we wanted to see improved, certain issues that we were encountering with services, items such as environmental code issues with bag trash being placed on the ground, recycling program concerns as far as the contamination in the streams, and just overall efficiencies in the system that we feel like we wanted to focus on incorporating into the request for proposals. So we started looking at that, and we worked to benchmark with other municipalities and in similar situations. We interviewed haulers involved in the industry, and we talked to citizens about, you know, some of the issues that we're having, areas that we could find improvement there within. So we began to develop that. We brought the RFP to the Board of Commissioners for approval for advertisement. And our goal, as with, you know, any bid process, was to get as much participation as possible. That was our target. And, you know, I think it's important to note with the rollout cart system, that was something that was not identified upfront, is, you know, this is something that is necessary. We need to go to this. That was, as we looked at the industry and trends and the way that things are evolving, that's just the natural progression of the way this industry is moving towards. So we said, okay, we don't want to just say out the gate, this has to go to cars. We wanted to say, we need to be able to evaluate this and provide an option for proposers to provide us feedback for price points and look at some of the benefits from doing the status quo, which is what we've been doing for over 20 years now. So that was how we structured the RFP. After receiving approval from the board, we went out to bid for this. And the structure of the RFP was primarily two options, right? So status quo, what we're doing now, which obviously, we still have a lot of the similar issues we're seeing in the field with, you know, the technicalities of our ordinance. The waste is by ordinance technically supposed to be in containers. And we see that as a, you know, it's an issue we're seeing all throughout the county. And so we look to see how we could get more systematic with that across the board. And with, so that was option one, the status quo, continuing that out. And option two being moving to a rollout cart-based system where the contractor actually provides the rollout containers to subscribers. And in that way, we're certain that the containers meet the sanitation requirements that we're looking for, and it also provides compatibility with collections equipment to improve efficiencies. So when we went through the, went out to bid, and when the bids came back in, we ultimately received two bids, and ultimately, one of those was deemed non-responsive based on technical specifications. So it is important to note there that we were able to get some information from that firm.
Dane, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain what, based on technical, the one that was kicked out? Can you?
Yes. And talking through that, so the firm that, there were two firms that submitted bids. One was Waste Pro, and another firm submitted a bid. So when the requirements that we had for cost comparison and be able to compare these two collection options was, we needed to see that information so that we can make an informed decision for subscribers. So the feedback we got from the hauler when we asked them why they chose not to bid option one was that it was, they just weren't interested in doing things the way we're doing now. It was going to be too costly for them. One of the things that they identified was workman's comp issues that they have, they've seen throughout the industry with collecting waste in the manner that we're doing now. And, you know, during the pre-bid session, we had approximately seven firms represented at the pre-bid for the RFP. And there was a lot of questions, a lot of concerns expressed from haulers on the vast differences in the carts that are out there in the field now. There's just not a systematic, you know, method right now for collecting across the board because the containers are so different. And a lot of instances, they are being placed directly on the ground. So that was the feedback we got from that. Other, outside of that, you know, asking some questions, why was there not participation? And ultimately, we got some feedback from other firms that they felt that the costs were going to be so high for them to submit a bid to get into this area and to provide the collections that they did not want to submit a bid for this, for the RFP. So.
I'm sorry. And just to clarify, did you say that the cost to submit a bid would be higher, or the cost to operate?
The cost to operate. I'm sorry. Yeah, that clarification. The costs to actually go out and collect. So there was some good cost comparison, so it was technically non-responsive, but they did put an estimate to the rollout cart-based system. Because they said, if it's not going to carts, we don't want anything to do with it. So they did put an estimate there, and I think it is important to note that that cost was approximately, actually is over $4 a month higher than the Waste Pro bid.
That's why I asked the question, you know? You know, the reason they pulled out is they could not compete with the bid, basically. Or they did, or they chose not to invest the money to be able to do it.
Right. Yeah. And that, with the firm that actually submitted bid, they said, you know, as I mentioned, if it wasn't going to carts with option two, then that was not something they wanted to even consider.
But would they hire, even with the carts?
Yes, sir. Over $4 higher per month.
Right, that's okay.
Yes. So with, and I feel like Waste Pro did a very good job with their proposal. It was a complicated proposal because we wanted to be able to evaluate continuing what we're doing now, because that was not something we set out at the gate to do. We wanted to evaluate, okay, what are the price points? What are the benefits? So I think Waste Pro did a good job on their proposal of addressing those. Ultimately, option one in Waste Pro's proposal was more of a cost per month than going to the rollout cart-based system. And that was a bit of a surprise to us, because we didn't really know what to expect with a huge capital investment like that from a contractor, not only with the carts investment, but also the trucks, the new trucks to service these accounts. So that was, I say surprising, that was informative to see that feedback in a price format. So after that, we went into negotiations with Waste Pro. We had actually established an evaluation committee for the proposals, and we proceeded forward in scoring Waste Pro's proposal. And throughout the evaluation committee, we looked at those, we looked at the options and felt like, based on the feedback, based on the issues that we're taking steps forward on, addressing the sanitation concerns, working through trying to reduce some contamination in the recycling stream, that option two on the rollout cart-based system was the best value option that we could provide for subscribers. And that was identified as the best value. So we, let's see if I can pull the PowerPoint back up. Let's go back. So the, I apologize. And talking through the, and obviously, we came to the board with the recommendation from the evaluation committee to move forward. And per our ordinance, we presented that information in two regular meetings, and that motion was ultimately approved to move forward with the, excuse me, the contract with Waste Pro. So I am going to ask Mr. Chip Jingles to discuss the service offerings at the $19.21 a month currently.
So our offerings that we proposed for the $19.21 was, number one, understand that $19.21, that is the cost of the service. That includes two containers. Initially, on our RFP, that was for 96-gallon containers. We did receive a lot of feedback, and with negotiations of the county, we expanded that and offered 48- and 64-gallon sizes also. So residents have the opportunity to choose what size container that they get for the $19.21. But the $19.21 includes the service and two containers, one for trash and one for recycle. Okay? So that's the offering, is weekly trash collection and every other week, recycling. And I know we've gotten a lot of feedback on the recycling program. Some have said that, you know, we're weakening our recycle program, but we want everyone to know it's just the opposite. This program, by going to the rollout carts, we hope to eliminate the blue bags. So blue bags contaminate the loads from the get-go. Blue bags are not a material that can be recycled. And so every time you fill up your recyclables with the blue bag, you're actually contaminating the loads. And so our hope is that you'll be able to place your clean recyclable material into the cart, and that's going to help the recycle process, and it's going to help the local processor here. So we looked at, we think that the cart program is going to actually improve the recycling program for Buncombe County. Okay? So just a couple of hotspots for us. And also, the deadline initially was tomorrow, September 18th. We have extended that to October 1st. Okay? And that is for the initial rollout. And so, you know, residents have until October 1st to get that information into us. We have the website here that is available 24/7, and residents are signing up with that. Before the meeting, I checked, we had over 10,000 residents have signed up with their carts for the new service. So it's growing, it's working, and we're excited about it. And I will say, just to note, Dane mentioned the capital investment. Our company, prior to this year, had invested nearly $19 million of capital in the Buncombe County marketplace. And with this new contract, we're investing another $7 million into the marketplace. So we want to be here, and we're investing into the community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. So some discussion points on why rollout carts. And obviously, we talked about some of the industry standards, and as things are changing and evolving with equipment, making services more efficient and more effective. Some of the key benefits include, as we talked about earlier, the sanitation benefits with providing carts and helping reduce the odors, the vectors, things like that. Carts help keep our streets and neighborhoods clean, so they provide a sanitary option for folks to move their recycles and waste material from the house to the collection point. And the automated collection speeds, that speed up service and the handling time. So, you know, it's, we're expanding in automated collections, where, you know, that's also expansion in making services a little bit safer for the workers. Because with automated collections, you're essentially moving that worker off of the back of the truck and controlling that from the cab of the vehicle. So that's something we're excited about, is seeing the expansion in automated collections. Customers, as Chip laid out very well, customers can place their recycling loosely and directly into the recycling cart. Plastic bag contamination is at the top of the list for things that are driving the value of our recycle commodities down. So this, we saw that as a key opportunity to take steps to improve the value of our recycling. And carts ask, so we've been getting asked this question quite a bit, and this is areas where we're trying to use our platforms to provide feedback for people that, and let me be clear, this is a subscriber-based system where citizens have the option to participate in this service, or they have an option to take their waste and recycling to one of our permitted convenience sites in Buncombe County. We have two of those locations. One location is at the Buncombe County Transfer Station. We've provided some of the address information here. It's on Hominy Creek, and we're open 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays. And we've, thousands of people use our services now. This is a cost-effective way to manage your waste and recycling, and we do not charge for folks to bring their recycling to us currently. And the other drop-off location is at the Buncombe County Landfield, northern part of the county and on Panther Branch. So we want to provide that context, and that's been part of the conversations with the phone calls. These are, we've received a lot of feedback from the public. We appreciate that. We know how important this is to folks. And, you know, these conversations are not two minutes, hey, this is what's happening. These are 15- to 20-minute conversations to talk about what we've talked about this evening. The process, the fact that the contract was expiring, the fact that with a 10-year contract, we anticipated some cost increases, right? we anticipated some cost increases, right? Equipment's gone up, fuel, manpower, labor, all those things have, were obviously things we thought were going to be cost drivers with this contract coming to an end. So those were ways that we targeted to try to manage the cost increase. And, you know, the, as Chip mentioned, the every other week recycling, well, that effectively cut down half of the trips for the Waste Pro vehicles to go out and service these recycling accounts, and it also reduced the amount of vehicles on the road. So we were, we were very conscious of costs and, and trying to figure out ways to reduce that. So as I said, folks, please reach out to our website, reach out to our, our locations at the transfer station landfill. We want to provide as much information as we can and, and for, for options for folks to, to manage their waste and recycling. So again, spurring off the, the conversation with the feedback we've been getting from the general public. 90% of the calls early on, people were asking me, so you're telling me my rate is going to go up on top of what I'm already paying, which is around $48 a quarter, an additional $19 to use these containers? And absolutely not. $19.21 is the, is the monthly fee for Waste Pro to provide a waste rollout cart, a recycle rollout cart, and the service for those units. That, that is the fee. So we're, we're working hard, Waste Pro is working to make sure we're getting clarifications out there. Because that, that did cause some confusion on the pricing point. So that, I want to be clear with that. $19.21 per month is the new rate, effective January 1st of 2020. Why can't I use my own cart? Very good question. So across the board, we get feedback from folks saying, look, my cart's totally compatible, it works now. And there, there are situations where that, that is, that is probably true. However, the vast majority of the containers that are being used in the field, or the bags on the ground, are not compatible with the collection vehicles. So that's, that's the key driver in ensuring, we know for sure that the, the carts will be compatible is with the contract-provided containers. We know those will work with those systems. So in order to receive service in this subscriber-based program, subscribers will need to utilize the Waste Pro-provided containers, rollout carts.
Can I ask a question on that, Dane?
Yes, sir.
So if there are certain, you know, certain container designs that do work, is there no feasible way to allow folks to use those?
So that...
I understand, you know, the, the, why, just having everything exactly the same, of course, that's attractive. But is there, is there no feasible way to do that?
As of...
Because I think the people who've asked me that, it's not, I mean, they're not gonna, I mean, what they pay is not going to change one way or another. I think some people just feel like, gosh, I've got this container, I hate to just see it, you know, you know, disposed of or whatever, so. But anyway, I've heard that question, so I thought I would...
Absolutely, and, and we've heard that question as well. And, and it does go back to the, ensuring the compatibility there. So as of right now, that, that is not, that is not being considered as an option, is for folks to be able to utilize their own containers. It is for service, it is Waste Pro-provided containers. So currently, that is, that is not available. I, I would like for Chip to speak to, we're having conversations now because we do identify the issue of people, people have carts, you know. If they're not utilizing Waste Pro's containers, so talking about that price point as well, if folks are utilizing a rental from Waste Pro currently, their rate is actually going to be decreasing. And that touches about 12,000 of the subscribers. So it, those containers obviously will be swapped out when the new containers are delivered in the field. So those will be collected and the new containers placed in the field for service. So Chip, do you mind speaking about, we're talking through some problems?
Dane, so one of the, one of the reasons for not having the other carts is, you know, we have a big problem in the county with, with contamination. I mean, not with other, with people pile, not a big problem, but people piling their trash on. So, I mean, if you've got three carts out there, they're Waste Pro, and then one that's out there that's not, then I would assume eventually, then you're going to have the other carts just showing up too. That would be, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a way to police that, even though, and I, I have a cart like that. I have a cart just like theirs, except it's green, you know. And we'd like to know what we're going to do with them.
Understood, and we are, we're working through that now. Chip, let's discuss that. We're, we're talking through logistics on that right now.
I'd say two things, you hit the nail on the head. It is about the, the whole program itself. By having a Waste Pro cart, they're readily identifiable. And, you know, that way, we can make sure we track those customers that are paying and those that are not. We do have an issue with that, where there are a lot of long lanes, and everybody brings the trash down to the bottom of the hill. And I got two paying customers and 10 homes worth of trash at the bottom. And so, you know, this is going to help alleviate some of that, and that's all a part of this system. And in, in regards to your current containers, we are working on a recyclable program for the containers that can be recycled. We're working hand-in-hand with the county on that. We feel that, you know, we're going to be able to develop a program that will be able to take these containers to a location and decide what can be recycled and what cannot. And that's the best possible thing we can do with those, those containers. So we're working on that. As soon as we have something finalized, we'll work with the county to get that message out on how we'll go about with that process.
Is there any preliminary timeline on that?
Not really, we're, we're working on it as diligently as we can. I would expect before deliveries go out, we will have an answer for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying, I mean, it'd be good to know before...
Yes, sir.
Because I mean, I'm like...
Before you get another container.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want four in the...
That's right, yes, sir. We'll make sure that we, we'll make sure that we get with the county and the residents prior to that, so they'll know what their options are in enough time to make a good decision.
Chip, thank you. Chip, I have a question that I called when I was picking up my grandson today at school. Another grandparent asked me this, and she had read the information. She said, starting out, what if she gets a 48-gallon, I think it's 48-gallon deal, and realizes that that's not enough? Now, you say that if we go back and get a bigger can, it may be a cost. Now, will it be a what?
Yes, there will be a cost for that.
How much?
I will, I'll have to get back with you on that, but there will be a fee for, it depends on if they're going to pick it up or not. And then there'll be a restocking fee. Because you have to understand, these containers, they're, they're quite costly. And once they're used out in the field, it's difficult to use that container again. You know, no one wants a used trash can. So they all want new containers, so the value of that container...
They might in Buncombe County, if it's got Waste Pro on it, I don't know, it might be worse than...
But that value goes down drastically. So that's something that we can make sure that we get that feedback out to everyone. But there will be a restocking fee. So, and that's why we invite you to, hey, we, we have the information on there, it lets you know what it holds. You're able to go to locations across the county and actually look at the containers and roll them around and, 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 you know, visualize, get a, get a, visualize it for yourself as to what you think will work for your household. But we do recommend the 96-gallon, that's typical. That's what's used in a lot of communities that we work in, work with now. So we know that that size does work well overall.
Well, now, in the city, and that's where I live, we have the 96.
Correct.
I'm on my third trash can.
Yes, sir.
I call them up and they replace them, it's no cost.
Right.
Will that happen, you know, because you do wear them out or different things happen?
As long as there's not anything abnormal, you know, if you're not, you know, running over the trash can or something like that.
No.
Yes, then we'll replace it, it'll be our responsibility to replace those trash cans.
No, without, the tires will, for some reason, come off.
Yeah. And we're, we're getting very good quality containers for the marketplace. The containers that we, we use, the brand has a 12-year warranty with those. So they're very good containers, and we think that they'll work well here. Any other questions?
Well, we're getting calls, a lot of them. That, that's why we're, we're having this discussion tonight. We're having this discussion tonight on account of all the calls that's coming forward, and especially the old people. And you have them now, basically, dropping the service because, you know, the, the truck can't get up the road to get to them. And so, and it's $25, I mean, one lady that, that called Waste Pro, it was going to be $52, but she can't even afford the extra three. So she canceled her service yesterday. I've talked to her, I've talked to three or four more. You're going to lose service, including mine, because I can't pull this can up the hill to my house, okay? I have a can now, it's only a 33-gallon can, and it carries basically two white bags of trash. That's what it carries. I had a lady that basically had the same thing, said she could put it in her SUV. She went to her place and tried to pick up a 48-gallon empty can, couldn't pick it up. Older gentleman there, he couldn't pick it up either. So she basically, she went all over, she even went to the transfer station looking to see what they could do. The lady that I was talking to, talking about, said that she's going to try to get with some other elderly people and figure out how that they, every two weeks, or whatever they can do, be able to take the stuff to the transfer station. That's a hard lick for these people. And, you know, she said, you know, her, this is hard. This woman only gets $757 a month, Social Security. She has to figure out what her gas is going to be, you know, to go to things. She's gone through cancer three times. She's 77 years old. And, you know, one bag of trash is basically what she has. And that's, she could get it down to the end of the road with her car, but now she has no way to do that. And even a, you know, why would she need a 29-gallon or 49-gallon thing? Or 69, whatever? I don't need it either. So I will take my stuff to the transfer station. Because I'm not going to depend on my wife to try to drag this can up a driveway that gets slick in the wintertime, you know. And if I can't pull it up with my hand out the window of my car, I'm not going to do it. And that's what I've done for 30 years. Now, my can looks a little bad, the bottom's wore out of it. But the wheels don't look too good, it's on it. But it hauls just two bags of trash down there really good, and your people pick it up really fine. So, you know, and we got people saying, why do we have to have this green can with a blue lid? Because it don't match the neighborhood, you know. How come it can't be a black or gray can that don't really deteriorate from the looks of the neighborhood? You know, why are we having to pay more for a bar can than we got two already? But I'm looking at the room, and I've told people, and I was on the radio about this, come to the chamber. All I see in here is a few people, Waste Pro and the rest of them, staff. We clean the staff out of here, and we're empty. And that's, it's their fault, not mine. But, you know, I wanted to bring this forward because there's people that's going to need help. Chip, we've talked, and there's a way that we probably can help. Avril's here, I'm here, I, you know, I'm not much. Yeah. You have other people in here that are independent, you know, pickups. So we just have to figure out how to help the older people. I don't care, it's like today with the thing that we had. Out of all the things that we put up, the older people was the number one issue, to try to figure out mountain mobility or help them to get places or do whatever. That's, you know, young people, everybody's for, I am too. But when you go, get old, you're kind of young again. Sometimes it's a little tough to do anything, and I understand that myself. But I'm having to leave your company the first of the year for that reason. Because I'm not going to try to be, there's no way that I can take that can and take it to my house. And I don't want two cans because, you know, I don't really have room for them. You know, I have one in the garage that sits right next to the door coming out of my kitchen, and we put the bag in it when it's full. So we end up two bags a week, Wednesday morning, I take them down. They pick them up, do a great job, but, you know, am I for this totally? No. Did I vote for it? Yes. Because without that, we'd have trash all over the roads because nobody else was part of it. So it's a good deal in its own way. You know, you're at 10,000, but you're saying you got, right now, you've got 12,000 people out there that have your cans already, and you're going to transfer them. So 10,000 now, you don't have the 12,000, but you're going to lose four in my neighborhood, I know of. So if you can afford to keep doing that in neighborhoods, and then if you look at 74A where I live, dirt road's coming down, I see piles of blue and I see piles of white. There ain't room to put all these cans you're talking about down there because there's no, there's no sidewalk, there's no nothing. How are we going to pick them up with a one-armed bandit? This hasn't been figured out right yet. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I'm here to try to work for the people. The people haven't showed up, but we do have plenty of talk. And it's like the lady, I didn't expect her to show up here because she can't even hardly afford to get, she, she plans her gas trips, okay, with her car. And I'm not, that's why we're trying to do this, that Waste Pro can figure out how to do something. And the county, we need to figure out how to do something, you know. Is it perfect? I don't think what we got's perfect. I think there's room to work with it, you know, so. But it's not up to me. As I said, I didn't want to leave the people with putting the trash on the side of the street and taking it. So that's, that's why I voted yes. But Dane can tell you, I sat here and said, you know, no matter what you call the $3, it's an increase, and it could be paying for the trash can. So that's the way I looked at it originally. If it's an increase and you're giving somebody something, you're paying for something. And you're not giving the trash cans away, I can tell you that. You know, I think the people that have, there's a guy behind me, he just bought a brand-new, big one. He says, what am I going to do with it? I said, I don't know. He said, but it does everything theirs does. I said, I can't tell you what to do with it, plant flowers in it, I don't know. But it's brand-new. So when you're buying these, I don't care if I got a 10-year warranty or 12-year, you're getting a better price because you're buying thousands of them. So your price is going to be a whole lot less than what he just paid for his at the store. If it works, he should be able to use it, you know, and Waste Pro should be able to put something on it, utilize it, Waste Pro picks it up. But making them a gentleman that just bought something, takes something different that don't really match his house either, you know. You, you go all over the place, I just looking on my iPhone, and you see all these colored things that don't even match a house. And most people paint their house to try to match. Well, if you put gray or black or something around it, it don't distract from it, it's bad. But, you know, some people, one way, some people the other one. But I thank you for what you're trying to do. And I think there's areas that we can work to try to help the people. And if there's not, I mean, there's not. But I, I went on the radio, told people, come up here. They're not here. I don't have anyone out here that's going to discuss this. But, you know, Waste Pro's trying. You know, we got in trouble a long time ago, and we pulled out of that, so we don't need that again either. And, you know, and I see one other person in here that, that has his own little company too, and he's supportive of what's happening, and I understand that. But I just want to thank you for what you're trying to do. But as we've spoke many times so far, we have to figure out a different plan to help the people that can't afford this. And that, you know, and me as a county person, you know, we can take their tax money, we can take their tax money with them making payments, but we can't help them in any other way. So we as a county need to figure out how to help the older people. And if Waste Pro can figure out a way that can help them, I'd appreciate that a lot. That way that, you know, it's, it would be a benefit. Thank you.
Yes, sir, well, thank you for your comments. And, you know, on a lot of our brochures, and I believe on the side of our trucks, you see that one of our slogans is caring for our communities, and that's what we're all about. And we are working with the county staff to come up with a solution for some of the residents that you just talked about. So we're hopeful that we'll... So we're hopeful that we'll have some ideas coming forward soon, uh, that may be a benefit to some of those citizens that, uh, are finding the, some of the cost, uh, and the service, uh, hard for them to bear. Okay, so we are willing to work with the, the county, and we'll continue to work with the county until we get it right. Okay, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Jingles, one of the questions that has come in frequently to my inbox this afternoon, since we chatted earlier today, is just to clarify where the cans are to be placed.
Great question. Uh, for every customer, that's gonna be different, where the cans are gonna be placed. And when we start the rollout program, that's gonna be really vital, crucial, uh, to educating the customers on the placement of the cans. Our goal is going to be to, when we deliver the cans, to deliver them at the location that they need to be placed, along with a welcome packet that will have specific instructions and more about the new program. So that information will be coming forward, and they'll have a firsthand view of where that can goes when it's delivered.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Are there any members of the public who would like to, you know, this is a, this is a new contract, it's a long-term contract, so we just thought it would be helpful to just sort of, you know, have some community discussion about this as, as we're moving into this new contract. So, um, Mr. Yeldon? Okay, thanks, Jerry.
You want me to keep your notes? I'm not gonna say anything that I haven't told them personally. First and foremost, I can't wait till they bring two carts at my house and see how they're gonna place them in my driveway, when my driveway's jammed right up next to my neighbor's driveway. And that driveway has about eight or nine of those houses you're talking about. And they got a space about as long as those chairs right there for their 16 carts. It's gonna be fun seeing those placed, and I have questions about that. Number two, the little old lady. I have discussed this with county staff. Waste Pro knows about a bag tag system. They can have a flat rate for that truck driving by that lady's house, $12 a month or $15 a month, and pick up a bag, and she has to buy these tags that they can only buy from Waste Pro. And she puts one of those tags on her one little bag of trash. And in the country, that lift-armed truck is not gonna pick up all the garbage, folks. They're gonna have to roll the cans from my driveway out into the road. I don't have a curb. There are housing developments where that system will work, but there are places in the country it won't work. So they're gonna have to have somebody out there to pick it up. Solutions can be found, they are to be found. Another thing is if they've got an area where it's in the country, like you're talking about, Mike, find somebody and subcontract that to somebody to pick up that little old lady's garbage and not worry about it. Because they're gonna lose the business anyway. So enforcing people, you're gonna lose customers. I suggest that you give people a choice for a while. And when they find out what's going on, they'll go earlier. That's just my personal opinion. I have nothing against Waste Pro. You're right, they're the only ones that bid. And so we gotta work with them any way we can. But I keep thinking, if I show him how to make money every month off that little old lady, and only have to give a dollar for a tag every time he picks, she picks her trash up, he ought to be able to reduce her trash bill a little bit. Because he's gonna get a lot more money from those four customers. That's, say, if it's $12 a month, that's $48 just for driving by. So just wanted to share that with you, let you know there are solutions. And by the way, if you pull everything out of your recycling in terms of glass, your paper is 50% of what you're burying in your landfill. You wanna double the life of your landfill, concentrate on pulling the paper out and keeping it clean.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Trash is a money-making business. I think solution to the problem is the key. We talked about the negativity of it, but the solutions are what we need to do. I think the, uh, Waste Pro should set up a committee, not the commissioners. They should have a committee set up somewhere or another that takes all the complaints into that one, and people can go there and find solutions to their problems and figure out what to do. The other thing is the commissioners ought to have a direct contact on the list on your website where these complaints are put out there, where you know what's going on, not your county manager. But it should be public on what these complaints are, because other people might be having them. You know, the, the thing that I've heard on healthcare, mental health, and also opioids, and you've all heard it too, many, many times, and it goes right back to what we've heard tonight, when he said there's a slogan on the side of the truck that said, "Caring for our community." How many of these slogans have you heard on opioid, mental health, and health in general? How many of these slogans have you heard? That is a slogan. That is to take your mindset off of the real problems that you see out here. What happens is the people that we're talking about, Mr. Frye's talking about, and you all are concerned about, or should be, is our retirement community here in Asheville, in Buncombe County. We live in the biggest community of retired people other than Hendersonville. Why should we be concerned? Because we're all getting older, and this is a big problem. What I would encourage is, is to look at a committee of some kind that these things can go through and, and identify these problems quick and solutions to them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, um... I'm sorry, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I overlooked you.
Good evening. Tony Wyatt, Smoky Mountain Waste. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
You just, please speak into the mic.
I was, um, in discussions with these folks, uh, back when the bid started, you know? And my main concern was safety. You know, I've been on the trucks, running it, and, you know, over the years, it's, it didn't, I'm glad to hear Dane say evolve, because that was something I wanted to see it do. It's being picked up the same as the Hyder days, 35 years ago, you know? I've been in this since 88. There's a lot of dangers, you know, when you pick trash up, especially piled there on the road, to the drivers poking with needles, glass. You'll see them put the recycling in a paper bag, and everybody puts it out the night before, and it rains, it falls apart, and they're chasing, you know? A couple of weeks ago, somebody just ran through somebody's pile of trash and scattered it all up the road. You know, they're not here to pick up messes, they gotta get the trash in a safe manner. And the automated trucks, I really like those. You know, it's hard to ride the back of that truck in freezing rain and everything, and you probably won't be able to get 100%. But you can get a bunch of it. And, uh, these containers, it needs to be in a container for safety and a lot of reasons. Animals and, you know? But, uh, these, these guys with these, uh, they're doing it when they pick up now, and I might get a block, I'm a little nervous.
It's great, go ahead.
But, uh, they, they need to pick it up with containers. They need to head in the direction of automated trucks when one comes along they can do more with. And these containers have to work with those trucks. And I'm sure you've got that in mind, when, uh, they put these containers out, you know, they'll work with that truck. But that's, that's the way I see it. I'm glad to see it evolve, and I hope we can get together with Mike and those concerns.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else?
Some, something, you know, Tony just brought up there. I honestly would like for Tony, or Dane, or Chip, to come out and look at the gentleman's container buying, that lives behind me. Because he just got it, you know? It's a heavy container. I have to say, it's a very heavy container. And it's a 96 gallon. That's what it is, that's what he bought, you know? So we're saying things that we're not sure of being totally truthful. You know, bring one of your containers, let's weigh them. Or I'll figure out how to put it in my truck and take it to your place, and we'll weigh them, both of them, and see exactly where they're at. So if they weigh the same, they're pretty well being made by the same manufacturer. And so then they should be able to utilize what they spent all this extra money on. See, it's like people say they've got bear containers, $200. If you get a bear container from y'all, it's $300. That's what I got emailed today on. So if they've had bear containers for two years, why are they gonna have to buy, you know, get one from y'all for $300 just because it's y'all? And, you know, containers is fine, and I'm not against it. I just can't pull them up my hill, so that's why I'm gonna have to opt out. If I lived in the flat, we could figure out how to get it out there. But pulling it up my driveway and stuff is, is not gonna work, so, uh, let's weigh them. You know, we hear things, but let's, let's go find the facts out. You know, that's what I want to see, so. I'll get with him, whatever we need to do to get his container. We'll take them and weigh them with your 96-pound container. If they weigh the same, they're just as good as yours. So, let's see, okay? Thank you.
So I have one question. In terms of the, you know, the concern that for some folks, the, you know, larger containers are harder to maneuver around, and the desire for something smaller, in terms of, you've got three options you're offering folks now. In terms of offering another smaller option, um, why not offer another smaller option? Is it just, at, at some point, is it just not, does it not function with the lift?
But with the trucks, you know, the size varies so much. And, you know, what happens, that truck reaches out, it grabs that container, lifts it upside down. And so, you know, if the tension isn't right on that, on that container, the container slides in the back of the truck. And, um, you know, it's hard when you have such a large variation of container sizes. So I think the next size is like maybe 36 or 38 gallon. It's in the 30s. But, you know, you're going from one container that's 30-some gallon to one that's 96 gallon and having the same truck pick it up, we just see that there, there could be a lot of issues.
The range might be too big.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, you, you have three now.
That is correct.
90, 90-something, 60-something, and... And 48.
Yes, sir.
48 holds three bags, which is probably what I'm gonna use. You know, when you were talking about the, the bags, I mean, I, I have before had broken glass at the house and put it in a bag and wrapping it up in something, because I know those guys are grabbing those bags, and it just scares me to death, you know, some of those things like that that are, that are hazardous. And I didn't think about it until you, you mentioned it there.
We had a needle prick here this week, you know, a needle prick, and so a lot of dangers, you know, when you're handling that trash.
Commissioners, any other questions for now? Well, gentlemen, thank you all for being here. You know, we've signed a new 10-year agreement, so we're gonna be working together on this four, I'm sorry, 5-year.
I'll take two.
We concluded, we concluded a 10-year agreement, and we have a new 5-year agreement, right? Thank you. So we're gonna be working on this for a long time together. And we appreciate the opportunity to, to dialogue about it and think about different ways to, you know, continue to, to meet the customers' needs in the best ways that we can. So we appreciate the chance to keep talking about this, especially as we're rolling out the new program. And, um, thank you for considering the concerns you're hearing from people in the county and the questions that commissioners are, are relaying as well.
You know, something, Chairman, I, I just thought it might be good after, you know, maybe, uh, three months after the contract, y'all, you know, might keep up with some of the exceptions we've talked about and, you know, and, and how you're working through them and, you know, and come back and just, you know, tell us how good you're doing on those things and what you're doing to address them. I think just coming back early might be a good opportunity just to let us know how things are going.
Yeah, we, I anticipate having to be back before then, because we wanna make sure we, we, you know, continuing to educate everyone on the program.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we come to new business. The first item is consideration of a resolution approving surplus personnel property policy. And Ron Venturella is gonna be presenting this item. Along with Mike.
We didn't know who drew the straw.
Y'all flip a corner or something.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're here to discuss the surplus personal property, it's a disposal policy. The commission about six weeks ago suggested that we streamline the disposal of some of our surplus property. So we tinkered with the, uh, with the policy a little bit, just to clarify some language, that if it's worth more than $30,000 for one item or a group of items, we have to use, uh, the general statutes provided in Article 12 of Chapter 160A. So the change here that's really relevant is that for any single item or group of items that are valued at $30,000 or less, this policy would designate, delegate to the county. Uh, this, this change of the policy would delegate to the county manager or her designee the authority to surplus these properties, to put them out on, uh, online for sale. And that would establish a market value to sign any paperwork required. And if, and if there's any property that's junked, so to speak, then it just authorized as a report to the finance office and then disposal of the property, and that would just be in the nature of common sense. So the first option would be for any group of items or single item would be to offer it if they're in good condition and can be further used for county purposes, to offer it to other departments. So if there's no takers, then it would go through the surplus process. But the only, the substantive difference is that this gives the authority to the county manager or her designee, and it doesn't have to come to the board each time that some item or group of items is surplus at less than $30,000.
Okay.
And if there's any practical questions, Ron would be more able to answer that than me.
I know you're doing a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, Commissioners?
Where, where in the resolution, does it say that we offer it back to the departments?
That's not necessarily in the resolution itself. The resolution, uh, refers to the rewrite, and my computer's not cooperating. But we, it's a rewrite of the policy, and in that policy, at the beginning, it says the first option is to offer it to other departments. And that specific language may not be in the resolution, but it is in the policy rewrite.
Got it.
All right, um, is there a motion?
Yes.
To approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion.
To approve? To approve?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next up, um, we're gonna have a discussion of the county fee schedules, and Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So on the agenda this evening is a request to approve the fiscal year '20 fee schedule. Historically, as departments have had proposed changes or fee schedules were due for renewal, these requests were part of the consent agenda. The Budget Office has worked with departments to compile all county fees into a combined document. We are bringing this forward as a new business item so that we can provide additional, um, public awareness and insight to the public as well as you, um, around changes and fees. Outlined in the supporting information that's included with the agenda is a summary of the proposed changes. Departments with changes, as it relates to their departmental fees, includes Health and Human Services, Public Health, Permits and Inspections, Solid Waste. For planning, uh, the only change for planning is related to copy costs. As we reviewed the fee schedules across the county, we identified that there were variances in the charges for, um, like, black and white copy costs and color copy costs. So the changes for planning equalizes copy cost, copy costs across the county. And then you will see in reference to public records requests, based on, um, recent history for increased volume and the depth of public records requests documented in the Communications Department section, our proposed fees for the public records requests, and that language is... And that language is in keeping with statute, what is allowable to be charged by statute. There are representatives for each of the departments who are requesting proposed changes and can certainly answer any questions that you may have or would defer to you as to what level of detail you would like to hear information about the changes.
All right, thank you.
Quick question for HHS fix. I think I am tracking with the changes around the 340B policy, but just wanted to see if I could clarify that there's a number of items where it looks like primarily birth control methods where they were being charged at a 340B rate and then are now charging a higher rate for, because some private insurance companies will pay. So anyway, if you could just clarify that, that seems to be the area where there's the biggest jump. Just make sure we're tracking on that.
Right, so we are obligated under 340B pricing, to use that pricing for our clients. We are also allowed to charge third-party payers additional. So 340B is pricing that's given to us and other entities like us, and not, so all of the medical fields do not have the ability to use 340B pricing. So we are encouraged by our state to, to charge third-party payers the higher fee for that, but it does not impact our clients, and our sliding fee scale applies to all of those.
So previously, everyone was being charged at the 340B rate, and now?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yes, I have one. On the permit and inspection, most of these are, they haven't been an increase since 2016 on them, correct?
That's correct.
So three years, so, okay.
I have one more question on the public records requests fee schedule that's being proposed, just if we could get a little context around the, what the previous charges have been and what the changes are and what's driving that?
Are you, are you steering toward excessive research or IT technology or?
Well, that, but just sort of a general overview of just what?
Just there wasn't a charge before.
Yeah, so that context of why we're shifting into charging and then what it might, the circumstances under which there might be charges that included staff time versus just pure expenses of printing, just so there's information out there about that. I think it's a little, I'm not sure how many other communities charge. I've been trying to do a little research. Is it a common practice? It is?
Oh, it is. And I think the vast majority of the time, our public information folks will send out a records request response electronically. Sometimes it comes on a USB drive or some other requested device, and just over time, it hadn't always been the practice to charge what the cost of that flash drive is, like $3.95 is what we're proposing here. We do know from working with our, on our printer usages and how those multi-function displays work recently, we know it's just over 10 cents per copy is the actual cost to the county to run the machines. So we just wanna make sure those are out there, and it also provides that if there's a reason to waive it or it's just a couple copies here, take it. Some people abuse the process. We wanna make sure that people understand that if they're making a request, that there may be a charge, and that would lead to excessive uses of information technology or clerical time. If it's a situation where, and the statute does provide that if it is such a situation where it's an excessive request in terms of clerical time or staff time or IT time, and this is really focused on situations where we're not talking about what's generally kept as public record, normal records that the county deems advisable to keep for everyday business. So if there's a request for things that we really just don't keep track of in terms of an everyday list, and IT has the runner program, then we wanna be able to, make sure everyone knows that we'll get with IT, sort of estimate how much time it'll take, and then give those people an estimate of what the cost will be to produce that material. Sure.
So I've got, I don't know where these comments will go to, but what I'm seeing, I don't... Yeah, I do. Everybody, for the love of heaven, turn your mics up. So I do have some concerns, okay? The manufactured home, the cost on some of our, you know, lower income folks is going up. One's going from 200 to 275, that's over a 30% increase. A lot of the fees that I see around the permitting to me are excessive unless somebody can explain to me differently. Some of them appear to be just going up by $50 or, but, single wide, going from 200 to 275. The reason that we're listing is to help offset cost. I don't know what cost would increase associated with that because, I mean, the same amount of people are gonna be doing the work, and I don't think we're gonna be adding addition. Maybe we are adding additional people, I don't know. Manufactured home approved, multi-sections going up the same amount, $75.
Yes. What we've always done in the past is there's been an additional $75 fee for HVAC units. That fee has been eliminated since, like, 90% of most of the mobile homes now already have that fee added to there. So they're actually paying 275 now for a single wide unit with HVAC.
Okay, so...
So we're just taking that fee off of adding it additionally and going ahead and adding it into the permit fee schedule.
Okay, so I think it would be important, under impact, for that information to be provided, because the impact is not, is, I mean, there's no additional impact for someone that is, for someone that is buying a single wide or here a multi-section, because you're not charging $75 for the HVAC fee.
For the additional, yes, because...
They're actually paying the same, which I will agree with you 100% that new manufactured homes will include a heat pump.
Right.
I mean, they're putting a heat pump on everything. That's been going on for a long time. So, so there is no, no increase. Tell me about the $400. There's not, no existing fee schedule?
For the new mobile homes that are allowed in the new zoning districts, R1, R2, and Beverdame, 'cause we have to do two additional inspections on those.
You're charging a $400 fee?
That's to cover the two additional trips.
And that is, why do you have to do two trips?
We have to do another footing inspection, and then we have to also do another, basically a final inspection on the underpinning to make sure that it's done correctly.
So how, sorry.
But just, it's just, is it?
Oh, we talk.
But the one above it is 350, right? This is?
Correct.
Am I reading this right? This, the one above is 350, this one's 400.
Right. We're not trying to...
$50 difference?
Yeah. We're trying to still save money, you know, for the price of those homes. We're not trying to gouge them, we're just trying to cover some of our cost.
Well, and I'm not, I want you to understand my comments. My comments are not saying we're gouging anybody. I wanna be very, very clear on that, but, but I wanna understand that, so maybe answer this. If someone is, is getting a new manufactured home and it's a multi-section, what's the increase in their fees? Dollars?
Single wide to the new one, you're looking at $50 or $75, I'm sorry. We average, on a single wide, we average four inspections. On a multi-sectional, we average six inspections, 'cause that's six trips that we go out, so...
But that's our choi, that's, that's the county's choice on some things?
No.
What about, what about the marriage wall inspection?
Well, those are all state mandated inspections that we have to perform.
But do you have to wait a day for the, do they have to inspect the sidewall before the siding goes up?
For the marriage wall connection?
Yes.
Yes.
So you've got, on a double wide, how much is the additional?
75.
So what's the 400?
That's for the new zoning, the R1, R2, and the Beverdame districts.
Okay, so then that's 400?
Yes, because we have to make two more additional trips. We have to go out and do another footing inspection for the perimeter foundation that's required.
Because of the design standards that we require.
That's right, I mean, I just wanna be, I just want people to understand and be very clear that, so, so to be able to, but they're having additional work done, so that work has to be inspected.
Correct.
Okay? So therefore, that's not an increase?
Not an increase.
You're charging that much on everybody else, right? To do a footer, how much you charge for footer inspection?
For just one trip footing inspection?
Yes.
It'd be $80. Under the new proposed right now, it'd be 75.
Okay, so you're, in R1 and R2, and I know some people up here think I'm straining it and that, and I'm not, just wanna be very clear that if, at the $400 is for two additional inspections?
Correct.
So it's 200, not $80. So footer, 'cause you're only doing a footer inspection?
And then another inspection.
For the foundation. The only additional inspection you're doing is for the foundation?
No, we have to do a final after the, after it's all complete.
But you're doing a final on everything else?
That's why we're charging more in these areas, because we have to come back and do another final on that perimeter foundation.
Right, so you don't have to do the final, right, on the underpinning on the others?
Correct.
Because it's not in R1, R2?
Correct.
Okay, so you're doing a footer inspection, and then you're coming back and doing a perimeter wall inspection?
Foundation, yeah, curtain wall.
Right, to make sure all that's done properly.
Correct.
So that's two inspections, and they're $200 apiece?
That's two more on top of the four that we've already done.
So they're $25 apiece. Seems like a deal.
Basically.
But the total is 400, yeah, it's, the total is $400.
Correct.
And on a, on a, on a double wide anywhere else, how much would the fee be?
350.
Okay, then, thank you, I got it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
There is, but don't cut me off, this is cool stuff, man.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And next up, we've got several budget amendments to review, and Jennifer Barnett will walk us through these. There's, I believe, four in total. And I believe that when we've done these in the past, we just do an individual motion for each one. So how about if you just present each one, then we'll pause, discuss, and vote, and then go to the next one? Sound good?
Sounds good.
Great.
So the first budget amendment is for the general fund, and the total dollar amount So the departments that are outlined in the requested amendment have requested that fiscal year 2019 budgeted amounts be carried forward into the fiscal year 2020 year for the following reasons. And these vary across the different departments as to why, and included in the budget amendment is supporting documentation for each department as to the request and the amount. The various reasons for why the request is made is that, in some instances, programmatic dollars are required to be accounted for and used for specific purposes. So the remaining balance for fiscal year 19 of those specific restricted funds would be carried forward for use in fiscal year 20 for that specific programmatic purpose. In other instances, the department has engaged either for a product or a service, so they've ordered a particular item, obligated the funds earlier in fiscal year 2019, and the product was not able to be delivered or the service was not able to be completed during fiscal year 2019. Therefore, their request is to carry those funds forward so that they can receive that product or complete the service in fiscal year 20. Additional dollars related to the economic development incentives, these are where incentive grant dispersment has not been requested from the particular contractor in fiscal year 2019. We still maintain the obligation, once they request that dispersment, to pay them. So we would request that those funds be made available in fiscal year 20, once they demonstrate that they've met the incentive benchmarks and make the formal request. And then for soil and water, that request is related to unexpended board funds. They generate revenue from sale of materials that that is then used for board expenditures, and that is particularly to their request. So the source of funding for this is appropriated fund balance. What you will see when we review fiscal year 2019 end is that these were dollars that went unexpended in fiscal year 2019. Therefore, we are requesting that out of that savings, so appropriated fund balance, that these dollars then be budgeted for spending in fiscal year 20.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general fund budget carry forward in the amount of
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second item on your list is related to the public school average daily membership, sales tax, and lottery project fund. This board approved the submission of the Fairview Elementary School application to the public school capital fund on June 18, 2019. The project has been approved by the state of North Carolina for the education lottery funding in the amount of $2,150,000, and these are for renovations and additions to Fairview Elementary, which will be utilized to accommodate the K through 3 class size reductions, and the project estimated begin date is January 1, 2020. So this establishes the project budget in the school ADM sales tax and lottery fund.
So move approval of 2.15 million, Fairview Elementary School. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The third request for budget amendment is related to the sheriff forfeitures fund in the total amount of $252,947. Throughout the fiscal year, the sheriff forfeiture receives revenue as a result of drug seizures. This allows us to equalize the cash that they've received to bring up, to recognize the revenue, establish these expenditure dollars so that they can then spend it for the purposes that are eligible through the forfeitures fund.
Is there a question? Yep.
What are the things that the forfeiture fund can support?
And I'm gonna look to Sherri Powers to provide that specific information.
Hi, Mr. Commissioner. I didn't know I was gonna have to speak tonight, so I didn't bring the booklet with me, but basically, the federal forfeiture dollars come to the sheriff's office through the federal equitable sharing program. There are strict guidelines, and they have certain qualified things that you can spend the money on, and another whole list of things that you cannot spend the dollars on. Basically, equipment, uniforms, training, buildings, things like that that are approved through the fund, and we carefully vet those items through the county's purchasing process anytime there's a request to spend forfeiture dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the sheriff forfeitures fund in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, the last budget amendment request is related to the solid waste fund. Similar to the request for the general fund for the budget carry forward, solid waste had contracts that were in progress during the fiscal year 2019 year. Due to the need to wait for some results, compliance and water monitoring results, those services have been delayed. They can't, they were not able to fulfill those services in full in 2019. So the request is that two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars essentially be carried forward, so out of their fund balance, so that they can continue those services and accomplish them in fiscal year twenty.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we've got a couple of board appointments to address. First is juvenile crime prevention council, there's one vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Jennings Gibbs Parker for the vacancy.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one on economic development.
Recommend William R Hathaway, M.D.
Second.
And so this is for one of the commission-appointed positions on the EDC, is that correct?
Yes.
And how long have we advertised this?
I'm not sure. I have to get back with you on that. I'm not sure of the advertisement.
And, um, and we only have one applicant?
Yes. Tim, do you want to comment on this one?
Thank you.
For this particular appointment, there wasn't an advertisement. There was the need for a replacement on the board, or the EDC, to replace the former mission representative who has since left mission. So the thought was for the EDC to make a recommendation, to appoint someone to still fill that kind of healthcare expertise on the EDC board. And so that's the recommendation.
Do we have designated spots like that? I understand it's an obviously important employer in the community, but do we have designated spots like that? Or just a sort of past whatever, presence of different groups like that?
There's not a spot dedicated to a healthcare representative, but mission being one of the largest employers in the county, the goal is to try to meet that need.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Well, I, um, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable not advertising this if we don't have a policy for such a designated spot. So I think if we want to create a policy, I mean, I'm open to hearing, you know, I'm open, I'm open to the idea. But if this is just a general county board, I, I believe that it should be advertised, and we should, we should see who's interested, and we should consider all applicants before we make a decision. Again, some of our boards, we do have designated spots for different groups and perspectives. But if we do not have a policy for, for that on this case, I, I believe we should open it up.
So is this designated?
It is not designated. It is, it is a vacancy created by a former mission employer, employee who's rotating off. So we would be replacing a mission employee with someone from HCA. But we don't have any policy saying mission, you know, mission gets an automatic spot on the board.
How many slots do we have on the EDC board?
For county reps or just in?
No, for county reps.
So there, there's just the, the two that are appointed by the, the board, and this is one of those. And I'm, I'm glad to take a look at the bylaws and bring something back to this board, just to make sure that we're, we're compliant. So I understand the concern.
I'll remove my, my recommendation for clarity, and, and let's bring this to the next board meeting, if that's okay with the board.
That's no problem at all. We'll be back to you. And obviously, nothing against this applicant. It'd be great to have. I just think we need to think about the process.
Now, let me make sure I understand, because now I'm on the board representing the commission, right?
That's correct.
And then we have one other.
That's correct, and we, we have appointees, and then we have ex officios, and one ex officio in this case is the county manager.
Right.
There are specific appointees, and I'm glad to, I'll bring it back before the board with those details, just so we're all on the same page.
Right.
And we should have that. I mean, it's, each board is, uh, clerk, I mean, you could probably get that for Lamar, that, that, what each, what that board is made up of.
We do have makeups of the board that we can present.
Okay. And I, and I would just say as a starting point, if, unless something is reserved for a particular group to make the appointment on, I think we should, we should always advertise for it. And then we might want, if we don't have a policy on it, we might want to make sure we have a specific period of time that we advertise it for, to make sure everyone has a chance to, you know, to really see the boards and commissions that are out there, and anyone who's interested could, could apply.
So I want, I want to comment on that, because I think that's, that's a good point, because this commission does not need to extend the advertising time, just because, um, some, or some of us may not like who's there. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it shouldn't be, we should not extend the advertising time just because it may not be the pick, may not be the one I want. Does that make sense? And so we add another couple of weeks to it. So I think it's a good idea to have a policy that says we.
Do, do we have a policy on that, Lamar, or is it just sort of, you know, as things come up, then we?
We don't have a policy on that.
You might want to think about that. Just so we're, just so we, you know, so you have a sense for, you know, how long should something be out there before we bring it, before, you know, the board acts on it? So maybe, maybe something else for us to just think about, not make a decision on, on the spot, that we probably should be, just be consistent in this, right?
Yeah.
Yes, and usually that is up to the particular board lots of times with the.
I don't like that. I think it should be consistent across all public boards and commissions, that we, we basically say if there, if there's a vacancy, there should be a certain amount of time that we, we advertise it, invite applications, and then make a decision.
And most of the time, it is extended because we haven't gotten.
Yeah, that's right.
So that why, that's why I said that we don't have a strict policy, but we can if the board chooses to.
Okay, let's just, uh, let's, let's think about that, and let's just take a little bit more time on this one. I think in the interim, you know, if we do have a vacancy on it, currently, there's not a specific slot. So anybody who's interested, feel free to, you know, throw your hat in the ring, and, but we'll take this back up once we have a chance to just give it a little more time to see if, if anyone else is interested, and then we'll, we'll make a decision. No problem, thank you. Thanks, Tim. All right, a couple of announcements. Well, let's, let's do public comment first, and then we'll do, we'll do announcements. Are there, uh, any members of the public who wish to comment to the board? Your time limit is three minutes. Yes, sir. And just let us know your name and where you live.
Hello, Daniel Walton, living in East Buncombe County. Chairman Newman and commissioners, on behalf of the Mountain Express, I would like to register our concern about the new fee schedule for open records requests proposed by Buncombe County's Communications and Public Relations Department. We'd like to draw your attention particularly to the special service charge proposed for the, quote, excessive use of information technology, resources, clerical time, or supervisory assistance. While NCGS one thirty-two dash six point two gives local governments the authority to charge such fees for providing public records, the statute provides no definition for excessive. Express has been informed by county staff that the assessment of a special fee, quote, would be determined on a case-by-case basis, unquote, with no specific criteria listed for that determination. Public interest in the county's documents has increased in the wake of revelations regarding corruption among former Buncombe officials. Express believes that such interest is a sign of a healthy democracy, and we are worried that the potential for county staff to arbitrarily assess a special charge without specific criteria could have a chilling effect on the public's ability to access information about a local government entity that has repeatedly violated the public's trust in the past. We urge that this specific language be tabled until county staff develop quantifiable guidelines for assessing a special service charge. Open records requests promote the county's goal of transparency, and concrete guidelines will help both citizens and the media shape their requests going forward. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Uh, Mr. Yelton?
I appreciate the comment from Mountain Express. I remind the board, one time, we had a lawsuit against the county when you tried to create a gatekeeper. What's a gatekeeper? One person that you go to to get information. General statute says I can go to whoever's got the information, the keeper of the records. Judge Lotto Cavendish agreed with that in the court here in Buncombe County. That's another thing that is a problem. You don't, you cannot create a gatekeeper. I can understand you wanting to know what kind of information's going out. But as a citizen, I have the right to go to the keeper of the information and ask for the information. Actually, the point he brought up, I want to reiterate about, you can charge whatever you want to, is case-by-case. That permits you to decide you want to shut Don Yelton up. And I think some previous quotes in the newspaper might show that that to be the true. But Chairman Newman, thank you very much for saying we should have a process and go to the public for it. I do appreciate that. Now, if you really want to know how to have this meeting tonight real fast and get it over with, and done be out of here, and done be home and eating, all these budget amendments, you should put them on the consent agenda. Because you didn't ask for public comment one time and voted on every one of them. All you had to do is put them under the consent agenda, just say, has anybody in the public got any questions? And it'd have been done and over with, because nobody would have asked questions, Mike. Who would have, you know? Well, maybe I would have, but you don't listen to me anyway, which is fine. But when you get to the garbage problems, you, you begin to see, I, I might know what I'm talking about there. Because yes, Waste Pro can develop a sticker for their label and put it on that cart if it's the same-sized cart, period, end of discussion. Yes, Waste Pro can have a flat charge by driving by a house and have a bag tag system. I showed them the tags. Turn it, I showed them the tags and let that little old lady put her little one bag out there and put that tag on it. The city of Asheville ought to be doing the same thing, you know? And that would help your next-door neighbor, because she wouldn't have to fool with that big trash can or come over to your house. So bottom line, there are solutions. And the one thing I think you'll find out, that's why Ms. Green and I talked a lot before she got arrested. She finally figured out I was about solutions, not just raising hell. But now if it takes raising hell to do it, I'll do it, period, end of discussion. But thank you again, Brownie, for two things tonight. One is doing what you did and saying that you're going to stay to your system. But just keep in mind, if you're going to do what you did on those budget amendments tonight, just put them under the consent agenda. Let it ride. Get out of here and go home, have supper with the misses.
Uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members Board. Been brought to my attention that North Buncombe High School students are protesting male students using the women's restroom and vice versa. According to Buncombe County Schools Gender Policy Support Guidelines, it seems that only the transgender students have privacy rights. What are the other students' privacy rights? I'm bringing that to your attention tonight. It's not no school board issue. This is a commission issue. If you get sued, you're going to find out you're on the hot seat as well. Everybody's rights ought to be respected, and you need to look into it. Uh, the other thing is, it don't seem like you ever clean up anything. You create more laws and everything else to go on top of something else. When did you decide on public comment? You've had a big discussion on public comment and where to put it on and not to put it on, and all this. And then you say, Mr. Chairman, tonight that you decided this. Where did you decide that? It ain't been here in the public. You decided to keep what you got. You said you did decide it. Where'd you do it? Did I miss somebody somewhere? Well, TV thirteen, you decided something over here with TV thirteen, I thought. No, you didn't. You left it like it was, confusing. The other thing, a fire marshal, that was an issue about TV thirteen over here in case of a fire. Well, we said something about the people out here, the police out here, the, outside the door, that's creating a fire policy. My God, what did you do? You moved them right out in the main area where the exit is when you're going out for a fire. Uh, they, they're blocking it worse than they was down here. So you need to clean up some of this stuff. And these are three things that I don't understand why you ain't cleaned up. Now, I want to know where you created this, uh, public comment, where you made this decision at. In the back room, I don't know of anything out here. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to be really brief. It's just a concern of mine, um.
And would you mind, would you mind sharing your name, please?
Sorry, Thomas Priester. Now, I've worked with Children First Communities in school, and I'm at Johnston Elementary. And just one of my concerns with just speaking to the head start, teachers, is the playground at, for head start at Johnston. And I think it's a community action satellite site. But I was there when the new playground at Johnston was dedicated to the young lady, Lila Pickens. And I think Mr. Belter and Mr. Presley was a part of that. So I didn't know if this was the place to do so, but I figured this was the perfect moment to catch the two of them here. And I just have, like, some pictures just to what it looks like now, and just what they would prefer it to look like. So I just wanted to bring that up, because there's nothing at this point for the little ones. They maybe had, like, uh, playground equipment that was maybe ten, twelve years old. So now that has deteriorated, so they're just there with just makeshifts. They have the tricycles. So I just wanted to kind of just bring it to their attention, and maybe y'all can direct me to where I need to start, if this is not the place to do so.
Okay, if you have pictures, you can share them with our clerk here, and he'll, he'll share them with the commission.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And, um, all right, well, thank everyone for your public comment. I don't want to make it a habit of getting into a dialogue. This is basically our time to listen to the commission, but just in response to Mr. Rice's question, since I did make a comment at the beginning of the meeting about the procedures. So Jerry, the decision was basically to make no decis-, make no, make no decisions. We've decided, at the last commission meeting, we talked about potentially changing some procedures, but we're not changing any procedures. So there's, there's no decision to adopt any new policies that have been made. Okay? All right, thank you all for being here. I've got a couple of announcements. On October first, at three P.M., the commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six. And on October first, at five P.M., the commissioners will hold the regular meeting at room three two six, I mean, at, at two hundred College Street, room three two six in Asheville. I do not believe there is a need for any closed session this evening, so we're adjourned.